You guys want to say for the President's Speech? I'd like to read this. In the last statement, the rhetoric and the regard for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual, will deliver peace and justice to all.
Mr. Merschitz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Gerbey?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Mr. Gerbey, you can do a cost of being a group.
Yes. Uh, I, everyone has their own minutes and there's no inter, any corrections or changes to be made, additions or anything, and I would like to make a motion that the minutes are approved if they're ready.
Second question. Mr. Merschitz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Gerbey?
Yes.
Yes.
Tonight, we're honored to have one Rodney Fox with us, who's going to give a presentation. And if we have any questions, he can tell you.
How do you get yourself in trouble without your help?
All I'm looking to do tonight is just to give some information for you associated with an item that we're having to deal with here in the city. This is a proposal as far as replacing our high-service pumps that we've got at the ground storage tank. Uh, they've been, our high-service pumps have been in, I don't know, how old is Hector the pup now? You know, all those kind of scenarios. And in this packet that I just gave you, if you go ahead and move on past the estimate, you're going to see some pictures that we've got associated with the high-service pumps. Uh, the first picture that you'll find there is one of this nature here. We've actually got three pumps in the building at present time, only one of those pumps works. The one that is closest to you is the one that works, and it only works in manual mode. And if you look real close down at the bottom, there is a bucket where you catch all the water coming out of the bottom.
Bottom.
Yeah. For the low pump. But the other two pumps that we've got, they do not work. They're locked up, they're seized. And then if you go ahead and go through the pictures a little bit, gives you a little bit more of a detail as far as the piping and what we're proposing as far as in the the cost estimate, the header piping is not going to be removed, it's going to stay. All right? That's these pipes that are running down on both sides here. Those will stay, and then the piping in between that runs through the pumps, that's what's going to be replaced. From here, from there, over, and if you look back on the one page, you'll see the other side of it. So you've got basically from here, all the way over to here, everything in here and there. Yeah. Yeah, all the valving and everything from that standpoint is going to be replaced. I wanted to get to the most important picture at all, which would be this one right here. It's probably about four or five deep in your packet that you've got there. Of course, I've got the joke even a little bit. Uh, this is the one that's ran on the generator. Uh, I think actually that generator was actually the front part of the tractor that you saw on Green Acres. And so it's been there for quite some time, and it does not work or operate. The project that we're talking about, we'll replace that generator in order to switch over and run the pumps that we've got. Uh, just to let you know, that's the electrical that we've got associated with it, it's going to be replaced and brought up to date along with the perimeter program. So that way, it's not going to have to be operated on a manual basis, which is what we've got by present time. Now, the problem that we run into, we've got a cost which includes construction, includes engineering, also includes a 10% contingency, about $470,000. Problem that we have associated with that is that if we lose that one pump that we've got running at present time, our capacity for water drops tremendously. The only water that we would get would be whatever we'd get directly from Rin Lake, and we would not be able to fill our tanks fully and completely. If that pump was to go down, the problem that we had about two years ago was Rin Lake, whenever they went out of water, we would have been out of water as well. So that's how important that ground storage kept us going. That one pump kept us going, but we were able to draw from the ground storage tank and then we put it back into our system with the high service pumps. And so, like any town and every town, $470,000 is a lot of money, there's no question about it. But it's one of those situations where we're going to be that if we lose that, we're out of water. So I'm not here in order to get approval for it tonight or anything of that nature. I'm looking in order to just provide you with the information of what we've got, where we're at, and where we're going to need to get to.
Would this work down? What would be the life of the equipment?
Well, normal expectancy is going to be 20, 25 years kind of scenario, and that's even getting at the outredges. Whenever I say this is the original that went in then, so you can see how it went. But I'll be honest with you, it needs to be replaced before today. So, you know, it's like anything and everything else from that standpoint, you expect to receive that kind of a time period, uh, and you will push in order to get even more than that out of it, just like what this has been pushed in order to get more out of it from that standpoint. So you're at 40, 50 years kind of scenario with this stuff. And I don't know as far as any fixes or repairs or anything that has been done over that time period, uncertain if there's been something, but I don't know what it would be. Rodney, I, with the mayor, everybody don't seem humorous at all, because of the people laughing. How in the world we get this position? I mean, all of a sudden, you know, you bring, you're here, you're showing me pictures of this, and it's been this way for
It's an item in which over a period of time
It's been this way for four or five councils, and it's all on me.
Exactly.
Okay? Yeah. So I'm asking you, is there no inspects to them? Is there any write-up then on this? Is there any? I mean, nine times out of 10, what ends up happening is that you don't look at it to the extent that we're looking at it until you actually have a problem. However, it needs to be something that we need to set up on a maintenance program that needs to be looked at from that standpoint. And so, if we don't do that, exactly what you're talking about, setting it up on a maintenance program, we're going to end up in the same problem again.
Maybe we
Wherever we come down again. Yeah, it's going to be whoever comes along next kind of scenario. And so that's one of the things that we need to make sure that we do, is that in the new stuff that we're putting in, new sewage treatment plant, you know, whatever it may be, we need to make sure that we're taking our steps and efforts in order to do the necessary maintenance, having it reviewed, and of course, I know, I understand, it takes money, but you can see what it takes in order to do this for a minute. Okay, any questions?
Yeah, we got to leave.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, appreciate you. Okay, on the public affairs report here, the update, the city is informed by, the city of Benton is working hard at addressing the coronavirus. I just got a printout from CDC, which is the Center of Disease Control, and it estimates, this is estimated on October 1st, 2019 to February 29th, 2020, there's been 34 to 49 million cases of the flu, 16 million to 23 million flu medical deaths, there's been 350,000 to 620,000 flu hospitalizations, and this is a cell right here, there's been 20,000 to 52,000 flu deaths. So, the advice you hear from people, and this is a morbid thing for that, I've been in the pharmacy business for 50 years, and I've seen the flu getting worse and worse every year. It affects infants, it's a killer to infants, it's a killer of people who live by themselves, and all of a sudden, they get sick and they don't go to the doctor and they die in their sleep. It affects skilled children, it affects people. So, wash your hands repeatedly, 10, 12 times a day. If you get within six feet of a person, the airborne viruses are transmitted, and this coronavirus is susceptible on hard surfaces, it's just laser. So, with all that said, you know, just use precautions, use your alcohol rubs and wipes, and if there's a time in your life and you need parent misery about this, you have young children, you have infants, you have elderly grandparents, you need to check on if they have any sign or symptom of the flu, you better get them to medical attention. So, because the city, the city is, we have our dispensers out front, we sterilize the place, this place every day. On the weekend, we have a thorough sterilization of the whole entire city hall. So, we've been doing our part and we'll continue to do so. Discussion or approval agreement for Moore and Economic Development for the Enterprise Zone, Mr. Gerbey?
This is your last meeting to have Keith Ranby, your TIF advisor, in the new Enterprise Zone in Franklin County, R-57, is up to him to be the Assistant Administrator of this, and his fee would be $95 per hour. As an example, he's going to charge that to the people that need him when they need him, such as, he would be responsible for conveying this information that we would gather here internally and pass on to him, and he would submit that to the Old Main Department of Revenue. I can't see that taking more than an hour. I did about six of them in about two hours, and I'm a real slow typer. I'm going to recommend this, Franklin County's involved in this, West City and West Frankfurt, and if West Frankfurt has something done, they'll pay Keith Ranby for what they have him do. Benton pays, it'll be for what he does for Benton. There's not going to be any common fund here for any common expense unless they change up the Enterprise Zone like the fire and annual reports like they do for TIF, they don't acquire that now, but they might in the future. It'll be a very minimal charge. Have that set out in front of every desk except yours, I put yours inside the packet there. This agreement's been looked at by all parties involved, and it was changed a few matters by Attorney Roger Cohen, Mr. Doc, this looks it over, and we looked at this thing on Friday and approved it as a group, and we're here tonight to get some of this, it's going to take all four parties to make it effective. Does this be approved? Any questions, then, I'd be glad to answer them. Hopefully, he'll be doing the administrative part of the thing to the Old Main Department of Revenue, if they're the ones that issue the tax exemption certificates for the sales today.
Thank you, sir. Partially discussion, I've been listening to various homes, Don, Story, you had a night. Do you need to vote on it?
Yeah, we should again.
I'm sorry. I need a vote on the discussion or approval for the Moore and Economic Development Enterprise Zone.
I make a motion that we have an agreement with Moore and Economic Development for the purpose of the Franklin County I-57 Enterprise Zone.
Mr. Merschitz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Gerbey?
Yes.
Yes. Partially discussion, I've been listening to various homes, Don, Story? You have a good idea?
Yeah, again, it probably affects you too more than anybody. We've got to do something with abandoned houses. Right now, we can't approve to have a contractor come in and tear something down. And I know it's, it's going to be difficult. I think if there's any spare time at all, well, I wish I could send my department some help here. They would do that, but I don't know what they do. Can you guys come up with any time at all to tear some house? What is it, David, for?
We got four on Test Street, but we're getting ready to go on, but we're going to be rather expensive, but you're on the same street, we're on a straight line.
Yeah. I think all we would have is that, but it's labor, and that's already involved with the work schedule. Now, I don't expect you to stop what you're doing to go tear a house down. You might have, you might have something going on in the street part, you need to be there, leave it, go do it, water department, same. And it's really not, I've just heard from different ones, we've got to do something with the city of Benton. And with the budget the way it is, if a street or water could pitch in and help tear them down, I think it would be great and appreciated.
And I'll tell you what, I talked to my department, I talked to the superintendent Miles about it, our guys aren't willing to do that on the contingency that, you know, if there is a major water break, you know, our jobs come top priority because we're being paid by the citizens to do that job.
I understand.
And this is just a secondary thing, so, but yes.
I understand, and that's what I said.
I'll be honest, my department, we were willing to step up and assist with this project in order to save, you know, taxpayer money and, you know, help out wherever we can.
And maybe, maybe, we get these more down, maybe everything will be good for a while. At least it's showing that we're getting something done. I mean, we've got to do something with the budget. And whatever it takes, I haven't said, hey, I'll give my $2,000 a year up, and I will. But everybody's got to pitch in and do this.
I've discussed with our, and I can't speak on the outside commission from that department, but I will say that our departments are willing to step up and assist on that.
What do you think, Lee? Give me your opinion, us opinion, you know. I know the guys are busy.
Yeah, and that's what I think of, I mean, and we're coming into spring, and
Roadwork.
Roadwork, and potholes and rain, and so, I mean, my question is having a, having an answer saying, hey, we're tearing down houses, not doing potholes, we're tearing down houses, we're not doing ditches, we're tearing down houses. So, and I get the bigger picture, and I support that. We've still got the trailer that's next to the
Right.
To our property that's still having, didn't bend this story yet, take it down yet. So, I won't commit them at the level that I've not had the conversation, but I'd be more than glad to talk to them and say, hey, can we carve out, try and help us away and figure it out.
I figured, take what? Two people, three, one operator and one ground person.
Yeah, and you're going to have that ground man there. So you've got two guys, you've got a guy on the back, and we've got a ground man, make sure we have them.
Then our only cost is dumpster and haul off.
Dumpster, no, that's part of the haul up, right? Hey, the dumpster
You have to rent those, get them all done.
Got to rent the dumpster and put they haul them off. So, that concludes it. We might not save a ton of money, but we might save five, $10,000.
Have any of those pumps been inspected?
For what?
For hazardous materials for
Didn't personally observe any, but those things are just horrendous. That one on Capital Street is more horrendous over in Adam Street, I'm sorry. We got two on Cap, one on Capitol, one on, over there, and we got another one over here that's horrendous too. I don't think there's any asbestos in any particular house.
I think if it takes a year, two years, that's fine, just do it in the spare time. Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Yeah, if there's not a timeline on it, I'm sure we can find a way to work together to do that.
I don't think we can put a timeline on it, because these guys get a water break, they got to go. There goes our back hole and the ground man. It's like with you, you might have an emergency come up while you're in the middle of it, you're going to have to leave.
I understand.
No, it's, it's, we're not on a timeframe here. At least people in town would see that we're trying to do something with the weak button that we got. I just, I just
And we're all part of the same team, I mean, we
Absolutely.
I have to tell you something, we all have
I just pray that we can get a little bit of help.
The only, the only thing you're going to have is, is if you have the water guy down there, you will have to reverse the water department out of the general fund.
That's, that's not a problem. I don't think that's a problem.
You can dance from water pump to pumps on Turner Avenue.
Right, right. I don't think that's a problem.
I thought it was just
Yeah, the cost just went up. Exactly.
Write that down, Kathy.
So the question is, how much does that save?
Yeah.
If you use the water department, how much does that save? You have to pay them out of the water department.
Right, so that's kind of the key in the purpose.
You pay it directly out of the general
That's right, yeah, that's because of the general fund.
It would come out of the general fund.
It becomes out of the general fund.
That would come out of the general fund. I have some concerns about any liability, any risk. I mean, we've got people that we hired to come in and do this, and this is their area of expertise, so I do have concern about injury on the job.
Haven't, haven't our guys torn down?
Oh, yeah, lots of them.
That's not, that's not, that's not something that, it's been done before.
We've done it, too. Ten, ten houses.
Yeah, I think Donnie, Donnie done
Because I ran into Donnie a little more and asked at this, because I thought he used to, and he had about seven to a year.
Yeah. So, I don't know. Just kick it around, you know, just, I just kick it around, see
And run the numbers and see how much it pays.
Yeah, just run the numbers.
We're paying, we're paying labor out of the general fund, and we're paying the dumpster out of the general fund, how much should we save on that? And if it's, if it's a significant
Their work comp's already being paid anyway, you know, so that's already, we're paying their work comp every day anyway, they work, so.
Okay.
Well, I know our running administrator works tirelessly, and he's got houses lined up, that he's put hours in, you know, and legal to get it, to get it, we're ready to tear them down, we just don't have the money to do it. And some of these places, he's had to look up as many as 20 people on a, you know, on one beat, scattered all over the place.
I wouldn't get groomed up, I'd just go out and help them. I'd toast up in the dumpster. They would write me up.
I had someone ask the other day, and maybe you can help this, and if it was regards to abandoned houses, houses we tore down, and said, when does the fire department step into fire department training using houses like that? Because I couldn't answer the question.
We talked about that today. We talked, David and I and Kathy talked about it today. EPA frowns on that.
Really?
EPA frowns on that. Now, we can go and ask them, but then, you've got to go around to the neighborhood and have them to sign a piece of paper, say, yeah, we'll do that. No, it's too close to me, I don't want to put up with the smoke. So, there's a lot to do now, I'm going to check on that.
Yeah, if you've got four in a row, you can pick the middle one.
I told them today that I
You've heard your way out.
I'll check on that tomorrow.
I was just curious, because my thought is, if they can get some training, and we can make a benefit out of that, and then we collect the ashes or whatever's left and get rid of it, I mean
Dylan Porche told me that he would take the bull by the horns and go with the EPA, go around and get it done if, if we tell him to do so. Shane said, that's fine.
Did you have a conversation after we did?
No, I had, we talked about it a couple days before.
Oh.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. If I told him that I think it's on my agenda, he would say, he would do that. So, you know, that I'll go into warning and have him to start with EPA.
Let's be honest, we'll be able to answer it.
Well, we've done it before, we've done it with Chase over there on the other church and South McLemson.
That's where I asked.
West Franklin's done it, I know that, and West City's done it, but they wouldn't let them do one the other day next to that, but they wouldn't have been going for it. Travel people. Anyway, it's something to look into, if we can just use our, you know, our options, what we can do, something that
Well, we had $20,000 budgeted for this year, and it was gone like that. And already working towards next year's, which is like counting your chickens before they hatch.
We've already committed dollars for next year's, too.
We've committed, yes, next year.
Well, if we can get them to the ground as soon as
And we will pay those dollars, Mr. Gerbey.
Good work, other than
Thank you. Good luck. Very much, I appreciate you.
Donnie, thank you. Shall you turn the updates?
I'm here. I need to go to the administration.
Okay, Council Finance Report, Commissioner Gerbey.
Okay, first I have a purchase order. The care of the elevators here in City Hall, and we had a replacement of the accordion doors, and that came in at a cost of $4,220. And this obviously was a have-to situation, and we've motioned that we approve the purchase of the accordion door for the repairs of the elevator.
Sergeant.
Mr. Merschitz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Gerbey? Yes. Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
And approval of the bill, we have the total of the bill, this month is $256,147 for the, this month's bill, and I would like to make a motion that the bill be approved for this one, at that price.
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Sorry.
Mr. Gerbey? Yes. Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
And the payroll for this period is out of the general fund, $68,019.61. Out of the water and sewer fund is $27,166.88, which makes the total payroll at $95,186.49. I make a motion that the payroll be approved.
Make a motion for the payroll?
Second, you have?
For a second.
Commissioner Merschitz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Gerbey? Yes. Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
And sewer adjustments, mine is for Micah Heith at 603 Bram Street, and the loss occurred because of leaking of the hot water heater, and the remedy for that was, you know, hot water heater was replaced. So, I make a motion that that sewer adjustment be approved.
Mr. Merschitz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Gerbey?
Yes.
Yes.
And the next one is for Sheila and Mary Garius, two little poor North Sidestones, and there was a leak under the house, and the remedy was that they replaced the broken pipe. Can I make a motion that that be approved?
Second.
Mr. Merschitz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Gerbey?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
And the next is Jay Cochran at 1208 S.B. Street, there was a broken water line, and it was fixed by a plumber on 21420, but the line was broken in February, and it was repaired by a plumber on 21420, so I make a motion that we approve that sewer adjustment.
Thank you.
Mr. Merschitz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Gerbey?
Yes. Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
And we have a resolution for hazardous materials. So, I'm going to bring it, I'm going to read it, and make some statements about it, and then we'll vote on it. This resolution is for restricting funds to providing services for the removal of hazardous materials. And it reads, whereas the city of Benton, Illinois, has determined the need to establish an account to restrict funds received when the city's fire department provides services for the removal of hazardous materials. Whereas the city will create a specific account restricting said funds after the deduction of employee payroll expenses as determined by the city treasurer. Now therefore be it resolved as follows. One, the city of Benton, Illinois, shall create a specific account restricting funds received when the city's fire department provides services for the removal of hazardous materials after deducting employee payroll expenses as determined by the city treasurer. And two, these restricted funds shall be used for the sole purpose of purchasing, repairing, or replacing the city's hazardous materials, supplies, and equipment. What I'd like to say is that it's, that at this point, I'm not sure What I'd like to say is that it's, that at this point, I'm not sure that this is a thing that we should do because we, we don't have the budget fixed for next year, we're not done working on the budget. This is a revenue source, and this year's budget, we, we put in there, this year's budget, we're working off of a budget for hazardous materials of two thousand dollars. We currently have a check for thirty-one hundred dollars that we have held to put in this fund, and we are operating as a city, and I'm not sure that we should be restricting funds. That I, I think that it should go into the, into the general fund, and we pay bills as we have. That's what I have to say, so if someone wants to make a motion in one way or the other, make.
I would like to explain a little bit, Kathy and I have talked about it. She's kind of not for it, which I'm for it. She's not comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it. But what that money does, it's like the impound fund of the municipal. They got, and the fiscal department can take that money out for anything that needs to be purchased, whether it be dogs or the canine. This is just, this is just for our hazmat. If we do this, we take that line item out of the budget. There will not be no money come out of the budget, out of, out of the, the. It'll come from here, it won't come out of the general fund. So, we're doing away with that, it'll come strictly out of this money from the fire department. Plus, when we go on call, when we get the check, we pay the labor back, the firemen paid on call. That all goes back to the city. So, we keep that money, and then if we run out of phone, we order a phone. Our phone machine breaks down, we repair it with that money. We don't go to the general fund and ask for it. But then, after all's been done, whatever's left, after we pay the employees, the fire department, it goes into that money. That's all I.
On the maintenance and upkeep of the equipment, when they call, you just said if the phone machine breaks down.
We gotta take it out of that fund.
Take it out of the fund, so like if they're using, if they, if they take a truck out, will some of the maintenance of that truck then be used out of this fund to take care of that as well?
It's more or less leaning toward the phone, the machine and the phone, cause it's not on the truck.
It's separate, yeah, right, yeah.
So, that's, it'll be strictly for the phone, you know. That's, that's all me and her have talked about, we've, we've beat our heads together from this.
Well, yeah, it's just come a couple of different times. So, then, the general maintenance and upkeep of the equipment outside of the phone would still come out of the general fund? So, it's not fully reimbursing back to the general fund, it's just reimbursing the labor back, the maintenance upkeep.
Right.
The city would pay for the maintenance of the equipment outside of the phone.
Our, the hazmat account will pay for it. We would not go to lease and say, we gotta have a thousand dollars for our phone generators. Well, we wouldn't do that.
It will be restricted for purchase, purchasing, repairing, or replacing the city's hazardous materials, supplies, and equipment.
But that's just to that, so her, her main concern, and I can see her concern, and Lisa's concern, what happens when that money builds up? Say that we don't use phone, well, I, I could see that. If we don't use that phone, if that money builds up to five thousand dollars, well, what, what can we do with that? Can we restrict part of that back to the general fund? Can't we do that, I think that's a.
If, if we choose to pass this resolution, and we see that it's not working in favor of the city, we could come back and revisit it and, and restrict the fund.
Well, see, that's what I was, too, like if we were restricted, have like a twenty thousand dollar cap or something.
Do away with the resolution.
Right.
So, what's the current budget right now? It was two thousand, you said?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, and you have a thirty-one hundred dollar check?
We've had for three months, we've been.
Okay, well, here's my question, that, that three thousand one hundred dollar check is reimbursed in fact to the city, and so rather than that going back to the general fund, we're actually using that as the money to start this account.
Right, so we pay the employees.
Right, so we're giving up, we're already giving up some of the city funds to put into a restricted account. So, we're allocating general fund, and now restricting that general fund money to, to start this new fund.
Right, and this won't be on the new budget, two thousand dollars will be all for the budget. There won't be a line item for hazmat, Dennis put that in there back two years ago when we redid the budget.
Could we, could this be considered, wait a minute, like if two thousand was the budget, could we say that the hazmat fund made two thousand, anytime there's more than two thousand in there, the, the rest of the revenue goes back into the general fund?
That's what I'm talking about, the cap, like, like if you get two thousand dollars here, over there it's ten years, it's twenty thousand. Anything over that twenty thousand would roll over to.
Roll it back into the general fund.
I think that would be more.
You'd have to rewrite the resolution.
And that way that you would have a buffer zone, in case there was a major disaster, for you to, you know, I mean, cause there's, sometimes, I mean, you just made you the extra money to go into.
More than twenty thousand.
Yeah, so I think that we should cap it to like a higher amount, and if you go over.
I just think we, if, if, it's just gonna help the budget, if you do this. And we will, I, I will watch it close. I don't know for sure what a bucket of foam is, I think it's pretty expensive, you know.
Now, let me ask you this.
And that's, that's a lot, the insurance company, the state has a law on the insurance company, they pay a certain amount, that's all. We can't charge you no more than what the state and the companies allow.
If we restrict now, and we decide to unrestrict later, can we only restrict a certain percentage? Or does that be all or nothing?
We, we would, we would get rid of this resolution, and if we chose to write another resolution, or just not.
What, you bring Kathy.
Honestly, I would like, I would like to make a motion that we once again table this, so we explore all of the, you know, have a better idea of the revenue that's coming in and the expenditure that's going out, to see what kind of money we would be restricting, because we are really struggling with coming up with any kind of a, I mean, our balance, coming up with a budget, budget that's gonna work this year, and this is a revenue source.
So, are you saying table it until we have our budgets established, and then explore what we can do with this, if we can still make this happen?
That's the recommendation.
We may as well keep us.
And I, and I will make that in form of a motion.
So, if I understand, Commissioner Garavalle, you want to make a motion to table the, the set and approval of the resolution for restricting funds for removal of hazardous materials?
Yes.
Is there a sec?
I would be in favor if, with the, with the discussion coming that we discuss amending this or.
You can discuss whatever you want, lighter questions.
You just want to table it now? Yeah, I would, I would second that, just because I like the idea of having that higher cap. And that way, there's, if there's money that comes back, that way it's a check and balance system, so it allows them to do what they need to do. But then, at the same time, it holds the city a little more ownership, a little more accountability, so I would second that motion, just now. I think there's a little more detail there.
Mr. Mastersman?
Yes.
Mr. Story? Mayor?
So, the motion to table died, so do someone wanna make a motion, do you wanna make a motion for that resolution?
Anyone want to change the motion?
That's what, we just made that motion to table that.
No, that's, is that the, that's the other one I wanna table, the.
Extra.
Extraction, something's popped up.
Okay, we'll, we'll get that, gentlemen, or ladies and gentlemen, right now, which you have on the table. Twenty twenty, proposed twenty twenty oh one, was a resolution for restricting terms for removal of hazardous materials. There was a motion made to table that by Commissioner Garavalle, against second by Commissioner Mastersman. That motion to table died, or excuse me, didn't die, it was denied, there was three individuals voted no. So, we still have that on the floor, do we want a motion to have that amended, do we want a motion accepted as it is? What do we need to do here, folks, you, you decide what you wanna do.
We can, we can go back and change it.
I mean, I've, I've sat here and listened for three or four minutes, and I've, I've got more people that say that there needs to be changes, and then the mayor's indicated to me as well, there'd be positive changes. So, I, I don't know if that vote, if that vote to table was simply just to stand someone's ground or what it was for, but I mean, it's strange that you don't wanna table it, but, but you wanna amend it, I guess I'm, I'm kinda lost in my votes.
What do we need to do, just need to.
Think about it.
How about you do a motion, how about a motion to reconsider that, the motion to table, another motion to table? Would someone else make a motion to table, rather than Commissioner Garavalle? I make a motion that we reconsider to table.
Is there a second?
Okay, think about all that.
Commissioner Mastersman?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins? Mr. Story? Mayor Condon?
No.
This was the original thing, I'm sorry.
This was the table, you said, yes.
No, I'm sorry.
You're a no?
Yeah.
So, you don't wanna table?
You don't want to.
Because I wanna go ahead and, I wanna go ahead and restrict it now, and then just get it.
Right.
Yeah, sorry. I apologize.
Someone needs to make a motion to that.
So, that did not, so there's no reconsidering the motion table? So, is there a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty oh one to restrict funds for the removal of hazardous materials?
Make a motion to resolution twenty three oh one.
Mr. Mastersman?
I would say I was willing to table it, cause I like to have more conversation, but I'm willing to be a team player, too. So, knowing that it's been restricted, and if we can make changes and restrict it down the road, I would say yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story? Mr. Garavalle?
I apologize for my previous.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Donnie.
Um, we have another resolution. Can I brush my glasses?
Did you do that? She was excited.
Yes, I'm just over here sweating. Now, I get Dollar, Dollar Tree glasses, and that's what happens.
You're married, so that's.
But I, I got my dollars worth out of them, okay?
No, jump over.
I'm gonna get the other fifty cents out here, okay. Uh, resolution, resolution twenty, resolution for restricting funds for providing extraction services. I'm not going to read through this one, I'm just going to table this one forward. I make a motion that we table this resolution.
I'll say it.
Mr. Mastersman?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story? Mayor Condon?
Yes.
And to further notes.
I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Let the county safety report, Commissioner Story.
Okay, I got purchase order shares. We had a little incident at a fire station. Couple of boys that got the bug, a fire truck in, and they got back to use it. And we had one fire truck down, so we had one wouldn't start, the other one wouldn't start. Purchasing batteries for it, that left us one fire truck in the city. Would say it's, they got re, didn't re-remand, we got a broken. So, we had to buy four replacement batteries for eight oh five, that's our latter truck. Three hundred and eighty-three ninety-six, from bumper to bumper. Make a motion to.
Mr. Mastersman?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story? Commissioner Garavalle?
Yes.
Uh, the other one is for firefighter Davis, his clothing allowance, four oh six, nine oh six. We come in as a code of thirty-three, that's for seventeen. Make a motion, we get accept that, uh, for his clothing allowance.
I've got a question, I mean, I'm sure this is totally fine, it's probably me. Where does the two fifty, um, purchase order approval come from in the situations like this? Like this was an emergency, so we were down trucks, it was an emergency purchase, totally imagined. Where does the pre-approval feel come in regards to clothing allowance, things like that?
I think it has to be spent by somebody, I don't know, I'm not for sure. Would you go with that?
I mean, they got it last May, and it just hasn't been spent quite until this year.
I don't, I, I can't honestly tell you, I don't know. Uh, I will definitely find out. I looked at it, and I thought, I, I just.
Which, it's absolutely fine, I'm looking at it, if we're doing a two, two hundred fifty dollar, you know, purchase order, for anything over two fifty, and defining what's an emergency and what's not, and if the clothing had to be purchased by a certain time, or if it was multiple, different multiple purchases, not all in one, it looks like it was. So, I'm just curious, I'm just seeing where that figures.
You're right.
In my head, I'm trying to figure out where that lands.
You're right.
I know. I don't.
I don't know, I, I will check.
This is an emergency.
I will check.
If the money is not spent on the clothing, and it's in the year, then it rolls back over to the general fund, the general fund.
Okay, there's plenty of time, it seems like, on that.
Okay.
I will check, I'm sure tomorrow.
Okay. I'll second it, didn't, didn't.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, you, you made a motion, that's correct, I just had to.
Mr. Mastersman?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Garavalle? Mayor Condon?
I'm sorry for your word, buddy. The third purchase order is, we had to replace a broken garage door. On Saturday, I was at the fire station, having a car fall, they were getting on call. The garage door was gonna go up. Couldn't get the truck out, so what we had to do is pull, pull an eight oh four out, pull it out, wait, put it in the parking lot. Finally got it out, I got mad, and I said, how come this hadn't been replaced? Yeah, I did. Well, we was just waiting to see if we had the money to do it. So, I, at four in the noon, I called the door doctor, I said, I would have it replaced today. He said, we don't have it, I'll give it in Monday. That, that just definitely worked.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was not a question.
So, it come to one thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars from the door doctor, I'll make a motion to accept that.
And it's written, it's written right here, nineteen seventy-seven, is the original?
And now, all of them, all of them's been replaced, they're all new.
So, if this one can last that long?
Exactly.
Four in the noon, nineteen seventy-seven.
I'm second that, if someone else has, but I do want to make a correction in that we believe that all the doors had been replaced, all that went in, and had we received a purchase order to get this one replaced, it would have been approved, because, yes, we don't want our fire truck locked in the building.
They had, it was in the budget, I kept, I kept telling Shane, we got this whole world, waiting to see the budget, see what, couldn't wait that long, so, anyway.
Mr. Mastersman?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Garavalle? Yes, Mayor Condon?
The last, last thing I got, uh, we've got some paid on call firemen that we're getting ready to add. Uh, Stephen.
Isaiah.
Isaiah Blades, Lance Page Thomas, and Aaliyah Thomas, uh, to paid on call roster. Uh, Randy Burgess, due to his health, is getting out of it, uh, the background check's all been done. The, Mr. Cochran and Mrs., and Blades have, and Thomas have all passed everything. Thomas is a registered emergency technician now, medical technician. The Cochran is a pastor, he's gonna be our chaplain pastor at the, at the fire department, he'll sell some tempers down. And the other one, Blades, is a student at the high school, he's wanting to get into career of firefighting, so he's wanting to be a paid on call, he doesn't have to, make a motion to accept those three.
I have another question. Go ahead, you go ahead and second it.
I do have to do the question.
So, the question I had is, how do paid on call firefighters work, how are they used, and how often? I'm thinking more of the high school boy, he spoke to my heart.
When they get the call, not, not a call from EMS, when, when I come in the fire department, they was getting paid at pre-EMS calls, we can't, we stop, stop that.
Okay.
Lisa and I and Dennis, we talked, it, it's crazy. Now, they get paid to have a cardiac arrest, or a structure fire, or a wreck on entrance, they, they get nine fifty an hour.
But it's only when they're called out on emergency? So, if they're, if they're at the fire department, and let's say they're washing trucks, or like Aaliyah who helps do the bookkeeping, she will not receive. She will not receive it?
No, they just, when they, when they tone them out for anything, they can't do the EMS part, but now cardiac arrest they can, because it takes a group. Uh, no, they, nine fifty an hour for emergency wrecks, cardiac arrest, fires.
You use the T word, was toned. If they're not toned out and they're volunteering, if they're toned out, then they?
Right, right. Now they come in and have call team, and they can do whatever they want, but they don't get paid.
Okay.
What about the chaplain services?
Nothing. He was a paid-on-call partner. He was volunteering his services.
Unless you take up an offering.
Catch the blade.
Make a motion.
No call partner.
Commissioner Messersohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervail? Yes.
Thank God. Very good job.
Uh, street's approved, Mr. Commissioner Messersohn?
I guess Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of purchase orders. If you look at your package, it'll see, uh, the first one is from Warning Light and for various signs on the square and for parking. Um, they need to purchase some post-insignage, specifically, not, in my notes, probably not yours, West Church, East Main, and then the square. And it's for the total of two thousand dollars. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this purchase order, so we can vote signed, validated. Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Story? Commissioner Gervail? Yes. Mayor Carter?
Yes. Second purchase order that I have is from Cut Above Tree Services. We have some trees we need to remove in and around the Lakebitten area, which is a total of four trees, and then the removal of one tree in the alley behind twelve oh eight Highland. That comes to two thousand three hundred dollars. I'd like to make a motion that we approve that please.
Is that, um, do you know which one, which should be coming out of?
The, uh, uh, I was going to talk to you about the.
I was going to say, because they like motions and they're like business.
Well, because that's, I don't.
Are they in the roadway?
Yes, yeah. They're, they're all, they're all.
So they want paid and it doesn't have to come out to your house?
No, it's all paid responsibility. So they'll either come out of streets or it'll come out of park. Yeah, yeah. And, but, and the four that they picked out was.
It's put it on one or on the street.
Yeah. We'll put it right there. But you go over it out of there. So I make a motion to approve those.
And you?
Second, second, yes.
Commissioner Messersohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes, I'll tell you.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervail? Yes.
I'm pretty good at that.
Uh, the, you'll see under B, C, and D, there is a map that I produced that is, got some colors on it, and then a much cleaner, much more simple map. And this is addressing the parking in and around the Campbell Building and the old Bitten and Meannes parking lot. Some of the conversation is, how do we allow traffic to pass on Church Street, yet figure out as much parking as we possibly can with on-street parking? Uh, the county has done a great job in, in the demo and the development of a parking lot there at the Big Eats Lot, and they are looking at twenty-six, twenty-seven spots, including Handicap, which is really good. Uh, we are looking at developing, hopefully, at least six, if not seven spots on the north side of Church Street. And I need to amend the ordinance on Church Street. That did you individually correct?
Yes.
Okay. So if you see under C, it's approval of amending the ordinance for no parking on the north side of East Church Street, and there are those two spots beside the Campbell Building. I'd like to make a motion that we amend that ordinance for those two spots on the north side of Church, just to the south of the Campbell Building.
Say.
Commissioner Messersohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervail?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
And also, I skipped B and you came back up to B. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the ordinance for no parking in the first block of West Church Streets, uh, west of South Main on the south side. Actually, we're not amending that. There should already be no parking, but if it's not, we need to amend that to make sure that it is. Um, it says no parking, but right now people are parking there, so we need to amend and make sure that that's the case, so.
And I was thinking of from the Atkins House, the Church House and all that?
The Campbell Building right here.
But it's on B is first block of West Church on the south side.
That's right.
Okay, but it doesn't affect any of the residential properties within the first block?
No, the first block.
I mean, it's a super block on that one side, and there's three on the other. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. Okay. So make a motion.
Are you tabling that until we find out for sure if that's already an ordinance? Or are you wanting to make a motion to approve an ordinance?
Uh, well, I tell you what, we probably need to table it. I think that's already an ordinance in place.
Motion to table B.
Motion to table B, yes, please. Yeah, if I'm rereading it, it doesn't make as much sense as I thought. So I'm going to table it, find out for sure.
Commissioner Messersohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervail?
Yes.
And under D, we're talking about amending the ordinance for no parking on the north side of East Church Street, which is four spots beside the county parking lot. And she's D there, there's four spots that are designated, drawn up, and it's at least four, there's a potential for five, as long as we have the room for it, we make sure we have the turn lane, you know, spots for turning on both ends of those. So I'd like to make a motion that we amend the ordinance to allow for at least four parking spots on the north side of Church there.
Say.
Commissioner Messersohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Senator Gervail?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
And just to, just to affirm, this is already in place ordinance, there is no, there was no parking on the south side of Church Street. We're going to continue to keep that. We'll add some no parking signs there. And that is to allow parking on one side, but still room for traffic going east and west, to keep the flow of traffic going. We will do this work once their parking lot is completed, and then we can have our signage and stuff.
Very good.
And then the last, well, two of the last, but another purchase order, I think, this was the last one. This is paying to me, ten last minute. Uh, we continue to move forward with the I-57 interchange project. Uh, this is the next payment, and we do have Mr. Hark here this evening, and he will probably have a thought or two. Uh, but, uh, excuse me before you, it's for Chaplain Associates, and it's our next payment due of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars, forty-one cent. And I make a motion that we approve that.
What, what do we owe after this? You know, I have a chance.
No, off the top of my head, it was paying to me right before the meeting, I would even look.
Do you owe me any chance?
It's, it's in here.
It's about three hundred something thousand.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's in here.
So far, I believe it's in your packet. I, that's.
Why do you not have it?
It's three hundred and, it's the three hundred, yeah, it's three fifty, the three forty-two. It looks to be three hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight seventy-one.
Where do you, where do you?
Well, they give me, yeah, they give me the detailed.
It's on the line item eight, on your second page?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So I make a motion that we approve this purchase order for Chaplain Associates.
Commissioner Messersohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Story?
Yes.
Senator Gervail?
Yes.
And the last thing that I have, Mr. Mayor, is we look forward to spring, and the Red Lake Water Festival, at this point, we thought the courthouse would either be in demo or at least in block off, and it actually does not be, so it looks like we get one more Red Lake Water Festival on the square. And so we have a resolution tonight about closing the square off and adjacent streets and rerouting traffic. You see the map there in the back. Uh, and it's resolution number?
Twenty oh two.
Twenty oh two. And it's just a standard resolution that we have every year, and it's about rerouting in Beijing areas and with block up and Red Lake Water Festival, and I just make a motion that we approve the resolution, twenty oh two.
Very good. Can I ask a question? I don't, I talked to Mike Andrews today.
I think I know where you're going.
I asked him if he is, he thought it's, please don't make that, don't doubt.
Okay.
If we get people to chamber select some people to stand at the signs, can they put your road closing barricades up, since it's not a Bitten function, since it's a chamber, would they, would they ride and bring us on, on the people that's volunteered to do that? Could you check on that?
I, I can tell you that, uh, the street guys have taken barricades up days before, in advance during their normal work hours. And then on the weekends, they've been in, in place where people could set them up, holding them back down.
Good.
So we've done that before.
Okay, good.
And then they just pick them back up on a Monday. So I know that's been done and not been an issue. So, and it would actually be easier that we're not calling anybody out on the weekend for overtime.
Yeah.
So if we can, if we know where they need to be, based on this map, we can set them out on a Friday during a normal workday, based on the overtime for the street water guys, too.
Well, Mark, uh, Mike and I are trying to work on getting some volunteers to stand nearby, to get some, stand there by the gates where the, where the streets are closed, so they don't have to do the, the overtime, just because of the budget.
Sure.
That's what it's like for some of them. I didn't want, I didn't want the police to ride up, ride us up, or the street department ride us up, you know?
Because we're using someone other than that?
Right, yeah. Well, now, Bitten's not done, it gets to change.
If you had two of your barricades, like we've done in the past, but spaced out because they will drive around them, it gets into your police tape and make it kind of longer day.
Yeah, we'll figure something out.
Yeah, that's, that's totally fine.
Yeah, it's not, we'll figure something.
So I just made a motion that we approve Resolution, uh, twenty oh two.
Commissioner Messersohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gervail?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
And you're sure that's all I have?
Do you have David Hark here from Chatsworth? Do you have him to say, or this?
I'm just having a purple, a different, a purple, a different report on where it stands. Okay, we're there. I have one, I have. Can't speak to numbers that you were talking about earlier, as far as what is the date, what, what remains. I can't find out tonight, once you keep making pursuits, I will find out that you provide numbers on most of where your budget stands and so on. But, uh, you know, you, uh, this is, you know, been here before, and we're still in the phase one process, that still has not changed, and it is, it is a long, drawn-out process. And, uh, I was expecting to go on for, and probably go this, this time next year, if not even into next summer. Uh, by the time all the regulators, all, all the process has worked its way through. But, uh, we're about to embark on, the fun part is, uh, see, the turf, the turfing's been done, and we're working up, uh, some of the proposed alignments and various alternatives for, for what could go out there. And, uh, I don't know, you all have a copy of this, this report, and, uh, yeah, the division, I dot Division of Highways, and I dot Division of Aeronautics now know that each other exists, and what's planned for, for the, we have on, on the future airport layout plan, for the airport, and now this interchange project, this interchange modification. So they, they both know, and they, they are working together. Uh, we have, uh, back in October, we submitted some preliminary environmental data to IDOT, and we've gotten, actually just today, gotten comments back on that. Uh, thus far, they have found no significant environmental, uh, problems. They'll have to do a wet paint delineation, that's pretty much part of the course, and they have some lending for to include some stuff about batch and things, but that federal money's involved, that's, that's, that's still happening. We've, uh, ramped up the state corner enrollment plan, uh, as part of this phase one process, we're really hoping engagement. Uh, we've reached out to specific people in the community, the regulators, they'll have their own special meeting groups, and we involve the stakeholders and the general public in, in this process moving forward. The, uh, we anticipate having the first meeting of the Citizens Advisory Group, soon in, late this month, or early this fall. And that, that will be the commencement of one, one public engagement process. And we've also created a public website, and are populating it with data to help with the public engagement information as this process moves forward. It is not ready for prime time, and it's, it's, it's just something that we're. Over the next thirty days, anticipated progress, and we'll have our preliminary alternatives laid out, ready to go for, for the public engagement. Uh, the final, the stakeholder enrollment plan is with IDOT, District Nine, and then they'll see the Springfield for approval. And we'll finalize project purpose of need, that sounds kind of silly, but it's a federal requirement, and you have to sell and wire projects to be in. And the materials for, for public meetings, the JAG meeting, and what to need, maybe for that.
Any questions from the council?
Have they identified the landowners around here?
The landowners who are likely to be affected already know, but know when, knows the patient process has been done at this point. It will be done, but that is not, that is part of the process.
Thank you.
David, thank you very much.
My pleasure, appreciate that. I think, uh, David City has given a lot of money and, and resources to this project, and I want to make sure that you are aware, what would you want to be aware of, what's going on. There's a whole lot of deep that we could go into. Listen, you really want to know.
We don't like shut things to sign.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, topic property report.
So earlier today, we had the discussion from, uh, Mr. Fox, from talking about the, uh, pretty much ground storage, pump out renovation, four hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars, which is estimated, uh, projection. That's one thing that, uh, whenever I took over my position, Craig and I went out and looked at all the lit stations, looked at that. I know I talked to every commissioner saying, we've got this, this giant elephant in the room, and I know I talked to him, I thought about saying, eventually it's going to have to, you know, be addressed. Well, the time's going to be now, uh, not like tomorrow, but I'd like to, uh, go ahead and move forward with, uh, looking into this. This is not a motion to pay it. This is just to table it for the time being, to actually progress on actually finding the monies with Commissioner Gervail, and try to find, and try the finances to actually get this, uh, resolved. This and, uh, you know, we heard Rodney say earlier, you know, if this goes down, we all go down. I mean, this is pretty much the main thing. Uh, it's deeply disturbing to me, some of the things that I've seen, taking a lot of tours around, uh, different, you know, things, and this is definitely the biggest eye sport that I've found. And it's sad, because it looks like if you walk into it, it hasn't been, you know, we talked about the garage door hasn't been fixed since nineteen fifty-seven. This ground storage looks like it hasn't been fixed since, uh, nineteen fifty-seven. I mean, it's sad. So at the time, I'd like to table this, but continue to keep researching for a time being, uh, to find the finances, to actually find this repairable, so.
Do you need to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, too.
I can, and I spoke with Craig before we came down there, and he was, uh, he gave really good information to me about this, this project.
And that's not, that's not a purchase order, so I think we're fine. I think the presentation, I probably took care of that, so we're probably okay to make the purchase.
All right. Thank you. I just want to definitely get the, I mean, I want to talk to Craig because during that water shortage that Rodney talked about, Craig spent, what, seventy-two hours plus running back and forth, you know, maneuvering.
Forty-nine hours.
It's kind of like you gotta run, you're supposed to take four, five, run back and forth getting this done, so.
And from what I understand, he's exhaustively looked into different
Exactly.
Companies, different areas, you know, to, to do this project and.
Sometimes you just gotta go where you gotta go. I mean, it's, it's like our, our beacon line, you know, we can only get it at one place at a time, you know, so. Second item I have is we have a purchase order from Preferred Taken Towers. This is the inspection of the water towers. If you look actually down at the bottom, you'll probably see two different prices, but the correct gives you two thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Just one of those things, we, we don't like to pay it, but you know, it's just one thing that we have to do. I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the inspection of the water towers. And that is all three, that is the one that's out, ground storage behind American Legion. It went off industrial parks and also the one that's downtown by the bank or Circle K or whatever you want. But, so, that'll go forward and that, so.
How can you?
Because of the addition of the.
Did it include all the power?
Yeah, yeah, that's the reason.
Yes.
Yes. This is an international house.
Exactly.
All right. And third, on here, we have the, from USA Blue Book. You know, we talked about the EPA earlier, you know, this is another thing that we have to do. We have to kind of stay moderate at times. They require us to do a new analyzer kit. Superintendent Miles, would you give more insight on this?
Yeah, I hear in the last month EPA's come around with this new, like, station plan that we're going to start doing, which we're about to start testing and now for a lot more stuff than we did before. And we test chlorine every day, and then once every two weeks, we test for bacteria. But now we're gonna start testing chlorine every day, free ammonia, total ammonia, nitrates, nitrates. We have to start testing for all those every week. So that new test kit's the way to go, actually. I've been, several phone calls with Chris Johnson from EPA. He likes this kit, so it works great. We talked about doing it at the plant, the syrup plant, but then you gotta transfer samples back and forth. When this stuff, I go back to the house, plug them in, drive to the next one. By the time I get to the next site, that test is already done. Bring it in here, plug it in the computer, and it automatically downloads it on my computer in my office. So it's the way to go.
With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve that four thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yes.
Yes. That's all I have, thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Landis?
Yes. You again. Can't hear you.
Bad fungus.
Couple weeks ago, Jay Coughlin took off and went to Springfield, training on a eight thousand dollar sonar. That's in the surrounding areas. Now, I've got Kyle Melvin, he's gone to Hooverella, Alabama, for a forensic training from age to the thirteenth. All expenses paid, except the gas. So there's questions on it. Why was it brought up earlier? I talked to Mike, Mike said because it's unmarked and said, are there any problems with him going to Alabama for forensic training? There's questions on Shane? I just want to make sure there's no questions on the police department.
Mike and I discussed it, I was aware of it.
The only question that I didn't get, like we were talking to Shane at that time, was there's a gas cart available to help him do that? Did he drive his own vehicle or his own, so he's in the vehicle?
It's gonna cost you double for what Shane did, two tanks there and two tanks back. So all the thing he's paying for is gas. So I just want to let y'all know that it's just not one department, it's both my departments, they're the same though. And it's, it's from, it's from forensic, from the United States Department of Service, so it's.
Okay. The way, the question I have, that there's a gas cart available, can they take the gas cart and there's a need for reverse name?
No, I'd say he probably took the gas cart, his weight's part of it. I just wanted to let y'all know that he is in Alabama on train.
And I like that he approached Kathy, that's good news. I said, I, I like that it, it's good to know that he approached you.
Yes. We talked about it, we also talked about if, if, if there's a need for city hall to know when our vehicles are off, on, on those training, if we received a call, there's been an accident or whatever, and we didn't even know that one of our vehicles were off. I mean, how does anybody else feel about that? Do you think that there should be, I don't believe we have anything, you know, policy as we're speaking now. Should there be, you know, something written out and turned in that the vehicles are gonna be?
Checking a vehicle, just to, uh, to block it?
Yeah, it's gonna be taken out of, out of our facility or whatever.
We, we've done that before.
I mean, we're down bare bones with our vehicles anyway, I mean, it went down.
You're talking about vehicles, I got an Explorer parked down. And the guy had to have it by five o'clock to see. So we had to have it towed to the garage as emergency, so he could have his vehicle at five o'clock. So that happened, and I let you set, well, what's her name, I mean, said she seen it on the road.
Yeah.
So I let you give me all heads up, it's gonna be emergency to get it fixed.
Does she have a police car?
Yeah, one of their explorers, last year. Come out of court today and wouldn't stop. And I'm done.
Anybody else? Uh, old business? Your business? And matters in public topics? Sure. I'd like to thank the council on starting in on saving our ground storage. I know it's gonna be a price tag, probably about a half a million dollars. But I remember when I started back in eighty-three, it was in that, that batter shake ball was down. And they just kicked the can down the road until now it's almost nothing. So hopefully you get that place rehaved, keep the maintenance up and, and all the repairs up and everything. Maybe it'll last another fifty years. Cross your fingers.
Still listening to you, Tom, will you tell me something?
I already been hinting you up, if you're gonna put variable frequency drives in there so you can adjust the pressure and all that, you know?
The brake is going up.
Yep.
It just keeps going.
Still kind of amazed, so this council, my previous council, they inherited hundreds of thousands of dollars of repairs and progress. I can't say I'm not disappointed in, in this half action because we, we inherited that quagmire of things to do.
It makes us look like the bad guys, all of us, you know?
Tom, you, you almost had to think though, if you went back to eighty-three when I started, they did something with it then, it'd probably be like seventy-five thousand dollars to replace everything. Compared to what I have now.
After you said that, that's what I thought, I'm, what the hell, you know? Anyway, we'll, we'll take care of it, we're handling it, if we've done anything else. Anybody else?
Please. Okay. I'm the one on Facebook that complained about Benton looking like a trash dump in place. And I've got a lot of responses.
What's your name, sir?
Roy Williams. And I, I feel like Benton needs to clean up the place. I, I've heard everybody and all the money situations and all this stuff. But I took the dirt clear of Benton today, part of it, and there's tires laying in the ditches. And when people go by, and when the, when the, when the county trucks, city trucks go by, I can't depict their things up, throw them into the truck. And we got a tire place over here that grinds the tires up. I asked the guy, I said, hey, what do you do with these tires after you grind them up? We take them to a dump. So if it costs a two dollars a tire, surely we could do that. There are a lot of stuff the city could do. I read a bunch of the, um, chapter twenty-five Newellson's laws. And seems like, according to the Newellson's laws, that the city can clean up stuff and put leams against the property. Now, I don't know too much about this stuff. I'm, I'm just an old country boy, but I want to see it cleaned up. My house, I paid a bunch of money for it three years ago. And I don't want it, my neighborhood to be like Foe's neighborhood. On, say Buchanan Street, there's about four or five houses right there on the road. I mean, they're trapped. And according to a Newellson, they should not be there. I don't care if, if you're not gonna do the ordinances, get rid of them. I mean, they got a garage falling down there, and there's probably kids going in and out there, drug houses, the whole works. We need to do something about it somehow. Uh, you've talked about a backhoe. Hey, a track hole would be a lot bigger, a lot quicker on all this stuff. Maybe knock it down, and that's all he does, then the backhoe could take over from there. A track hoe could probably knock them houses down in six hours maybe, and the city could clean it up. I don't know if that would work or not, but that's an idea. But there's a lot of, there's houses, trash is leaned up against the houses. There's trucks out there and cars out there, it's been there for two years, I know. And there's ordinance against them. Why can't we get something done from the city about implementing the ordinance?
Are you sure?
Well.
I mean, I'm not in a hurry, I just asking questions, so, so I can respond and the council can respond to it.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay.
I might have another question when it's done, though.
Oh. Man, I, I can be here all night long.
Well, I can too, I'm a trucker.
In response to a lot of things you said, you, you are correct. In going into that depth, we have restrictions that we can't do certain things. It doesn't restrict my wife and me going down to a private, to a city parking lot and pulling weeds all day on Saturday and getting thirty-six trash bags full of weeds. Okay? It doesn't restrict a bunch, a handful of volunteers in the city going out to these functions that, that we provide pre-charge and doing that work. What baffles me, and you aren't one of these guys that's ever looking at you, people will call us to come clean up their ditch. And they're too able by people to get a rake and rake the leaves out of their ditch.
I agree with you.
Back in the old days, in the sixties, when I was growing up, I pulled weeds on my sidewalk because the postman walked on the sidewalk. My dad didn't want it to look bad for the postman. If you get a bunch of people who do that today, they probably be committed to the cleanup side. Our, our whole, our whole thought process in our, our community, and we've been preaching this to the council, volunteerism. We're begging for volunteers. This doesn't, this doesn't refer to you. I can answer my phone any, why don't you come down here and cuss, 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 and do this, you haven't done this, and cuss, 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 you know? David and I, the zoning commission, drive around all the time. And we, we cite things. You heard from the finance commissioner, we, we don't have enough money to, we, we could actually demolish a hundred houses in Benton. And it would make the town look better, but it would not clean the town up. When it first came into office, we had a free disposal of tires in the city. And we filled up one and a half semi trucks full of tires. And their services took them to the dump and did what they do with them. As I drive around now, I see more tires here and there. It's just, it's a conglomeration of repeat, you know, a groundhog day. So what, what you said is correct, what you said, a lot of things you said is, is accurate. And what I'm saying as the mayor, we need help from the citizens to, to clean this town up as well as the council and the city.
I agree with you, wholeheartedly.
Yeah.
But I think the city should take the lead so the people can see that the city is concerned about this. And maybe they will help. But as it is right now, these things have been laying there, these old houses. But I don't know how many houses or these houses that I talked about was on the list to be destroyed or not, I have no clue. Don't care. But I think somebody has to take the lead in this.
Yeah.
We gotta get some calls.
We're trying, we're trying, we're really trying. You, Pam?
I'm not gonna pat myself on the back. I'm seventy-eight years old, and I am out picking up trash, cutting weeds, cleaning people's dishes for them. In my neighborhood, I've even cleaned up the grave where the, the, uh, leaves had gotten in there a half. I can't find anybody that will help me. And there's bound to be some able-bodied men in this town. I have a bad back, I've had back surgery before. But I am trying to do my part in making neighborhoods look nice. And I have really picked up a lot of trash and a lot of debris for now.
I worked on the Flint's grocery, I mean, Detroit's street.
Well, we should be proud of that, that we're helping if somebody else in this town of seven thousand can help. There's bound to be people that can pick up in their yard, we have a trash service.
These, these yards look terrible.
But it's their fault, it's the homeowner's fault.
Right, absolutely. But somebody has got to push a button. That's that guy right there. What have you gone through, David? Get stuff done. You can talk online, you can talk online.
We're turning down that place on East Main Street because it looks terrible too, to have more parking. Got seven more houses in line to demolish, two houses over my budget this year. And we're gonna talk about another place here that's gonna be rather substantial, this and I saw it too, so. I, I know one I saw on a particular street and the person lives there, it's atrocious, but
Oh, yeah, I do think so.
You can't take them out of their house, but I mean, where to go?
But, but I agree with you. I don't want to destroy a house that somebody's living in, but you can't have somebody living in there if they have no electricity or no water.
Roy, yes, you can.
You can?
We've gone to court. I'm telling you, you know, I'm, I'm as frustrated and more than you are. We, we went to court on a, on a house we finally got demolished, which is in and out of court for twelve years. And if you think, if you think Benton is bad as a city, the justice system is a thousand times worse. Because they allow these things to happen.
Well, I, I hate to see the, I hate to see Benton go down this road. I just, like I said, I paid a lot of money for this house, which was my fault. I, I, if I'd known then what I know now, I would have told the Benton.
I mean, I, I, I understand the frustration. I'm as frustrated as, I've been doing this for four and a half years. And sometimes I walk out of here thinking, it's just not worth my time, you know?
Well, I had a, uh, how many people did I have on Facebook that called me? A hundred and sixty-five or something like that, when you were vowing Kathy?
And you know what I'm hoping for? That a hundred and sixty-five of them will get some trash bags, wood, and, and walk the streets and pick up the trash.
That's what I'm saying.
Instead of sitting there complaining and talking about
Right.
About how bad we are. We're good, we're not bad, we're, we're good people. I, I work hard at this, and these guys here work hard, and ladies, we volunteer our tail ends off. And then all we, all we hear at a certain time period is, is stupid talk. Benton is the worst thing that's ever happened to the city of Benton. The people on there complaining if they would just take care of their own items and take care of the neighbor and take care of the, the part of town they don't like, pick, pick something up or go knock on that door and say, I want to help you. Come here, I want, I want to help clean you up, you know?
Last year, a big deal was made out of an address, three oh three something, it's behind a grainy.
Okay.
And it's still like that. It, it got cleaned up a little bit, but that's where the tires have been, it's a year.
Okay, you want to talk about court now? Any, any, any two legal want to talk about court now? They've been in court on that?
Tell them the process that you go through, and then tell them how it is at our house. When I, when you bring something and say, I want this cleaned up, and I say, we don't have any money, you're not real happy with me.
But you know, when we first started as this city council for this brand new, our new councils, and I'm gonna say that, we had a unofficial, because they used to do a cleaning green in this town, and I don't leave with it. And everybody says, when are we gonna clean up this town? When are we gonna clean up this town? And we had the cleaning green, and I tell you what, on Facebook, there was at least four or five hundred people. Let's clean this town up. When we did it, what'd we have, like thirty-two people?
Yeah.
And that was like, I mean, and that was an exaggeration. After that was, you know, like, you know, the firemen helping us cook hot dogs and, and I think, I mean, it's, you know, it's, we actually had to get people out there, so, I mean, I ain't saying them, but we just gotta put our money where the mouth is. I mean, I would never ask somebody to do something that I wouldn't do myself. I mean, if I say that we're gonna do a cleaning green.
We got to put our back down, we have no money.
But, you know, that's whatever. But I mean, the thing is, if people really want to do it, then they need to step up and, you know?
I'm from a little community, or I was from a little community of Woodsland.
Yeah, I know Woodsland very well.
And, and about the first of May, before the grass grid got tall, you could see stuff to pick up. And we had a town, or townwide cleanup. The, the, town finished the backhoe, they brought in a couple of dumpsters, volunteer firemen came in, and people from the community.
We brought in trash bags, we farmers, uh,
We cleaned it up.
We did everything, people stood up shop.
We cleaned, well, I think maybe if we get on Facebook again and start really talking about it, we might be able to get something going.
But that's where I'm saying, before we had five hundred plus people saying, let's do it. And then now with like, when it comes down, you know, you know, when we reach the highway, then.
A lot of people afraid to go up and hop on doors. You don't know if you're gonna get shot, or what?
You're, you're, you're telling me two things. You're telling me, we ought to clean up this house that is, is terrible. I'm telling you, we need to contact people, you're telling me, don't do it because it's, it's dangerous.
But let me tell you what, we, along with America, are losing the battle on keeping things clean and clean.
Yes, we are.
And I don't like it at one bit, and I agree with you, but for us in here to make a change, we could go out and do twenty-four-sevens, or three hundred fifty-five days a year. And I'm telling you, you'd be criticized for it. But we're gonna keep on doing it. So if you have any complaints, you're welcome, and I'm glad you did.
I am too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, my name's Ruff Ballard, I live three oh, three oh one West Fifth.
Welcome back, you were here last year.
Yes, I was.
The year before last.
And a lot has happened since the last time I was here.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Story, for getting that five or six days of cleanup in the area between Market and Ducoyne, Fifth, and Reed. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
But a lot of the stuff that I asked to be done there wasn't done. Because Mr. Garwalia come back off of vacation, okay? CDC, the CDC stepped in. The State Board of Health stepped in on my recommendations, okay? One neighbor to the east of me, you know where I'm at, he had to completely clean his yard up, clean out a fence row, two brush piles. One of them was in his front yard next to his front porch, he had to clean them up, okay? Good. The one street across from me, at two twelve, has yet to be touched. Has yet to be touched. I believe I know why, and I believe it's a daughter-in-law or a daughter of one of the commissioners here, okay? I'm not positive, because I haven't dug in on it. All I've been doing is listening to my neighbors, and my neighbors is going crazy towards this stuff.
Gracious business.
Man. But the place that had not been mowed in ten years, appreciate it, appreciate it. Ten years, that yard had not been mowed, okay? I got five trees at the end of Fifth Street, three of them are dead, one of them is blocking traffic, okay? You have to pull out on Fifth, from Fifth Street out on Ducoyne to see which way if traffic is coming, okay? I don't know if it's across the sidewalk or on the roadside, there's no sidewalk, there. Okay, so there's no, no respect in distances, okay, at Ducoyne. Across the street on Ducoyne, now there's a sidewalk that's right next to Ducoyne, and I understand that one, okay? There's still automobiles parked in yards that has nineteen and, or twenty oh seven license plates on them, okay? I have a person that has two cars parked in these driveway. That's got last year's license plate, well, one of them's got last year's, one of them's got twenty eighteen license plate. But his car, that he drives, he parks on the road. And he parks at the corner. Whenever that trash truck comes by, he has to take off my corner lane, which is gonna be a damaging year, your, 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 not the sewer line, the...
Storm drain.
Storm drain.
I know what you're talking about.
He's gonna run that damn thing in brown pretty soon. They're gonna take very long, the way the wet, the wetness is setting in now. It's starting to crack, okay? It's starting to crack right there. That car needs to be moved for that reason there. And I thank you for cleaning the storm drains out. We tried, we can't do it because with rakes and polts and things like that, it took a big machine to get it cleaned out. It's all right, it rained after a day, now you want the water in the road.
I'm so glad you say that, thank you.
Yeah, no, no problem. We did, we did, but you're gonna have trouble come the next fall. There's gonna be a lot of trouble right there again.
What's the address where the, where the car is?
Yeah. Uh, two eleven Fifth, West Fifth. It's all right, it rained after a day, now you want the water in the road.
I'm so glad you say that, thank you.
Yeah, no, no problem. We did, we did, but you're gonna have trouble come the next fall. There's gonna be a lot of trouble right there again.
What's the address where the, where the car is?
Yeah. Uh, two eleven Fifth. West Fifth. Uh, the State Board of Health come in on that same person, and forced him to clean all that stuff up there. Now, the State Board of Health has not notified anyone of anything done at two twelve. So I have no idea there, what's happened, okay? I do know that the breeding grounds for western owl are gone, I do know that. That's one good thing. And, uh, we'll see. Down on Williams, I can't give you an address, there's gonna be trouble down that way with high grass again this year. I don't know who's in, who's in charge of watching out for high grasses, because breeds, yeah, breeds animals, wild animals in the city. We had thirty-six rabbits this summer. That's within a four-block area. You don't want to knock them out? A hawk's nest. Not the city of Benton, a hawk's nest.
We can't, we can't, we can't take this.
I know you can't, I understand that.
But we can import more hawks.
But from the import more hawks, yes, we sure can.
The hawk's like a gun?
And at the same time, you can stop the people who are catching feral cats, asking not to, not to, not to catch as many feral cats. Or take them down and have them fed to the broth pack. To eliminate those risks. The stump is still there, it's down there on, I don't know what the name of that street is, west of Election, the first street of West Election. It's down there in that alleyway someplace down in that way. The raccoon's gone, it got killed down there by Ducoyne. The groundhog, it was smashed on Ducoyne, okay? Yeah. Oh, thank you for bringing the animal controller person in to help eliminate a lot of those animals too, okay? I know he couldn't do any other rabbit.
He can't do a lot with wild animals, but he can...
But I, I help, I help the city with what I'm doing tonight, with the area that I was talking about between Market and Ducoyne and Fifth and Reed. Because I walk those streets, I walk those sidewalks, and that's how come CDC come down on me. Two years in a row, I got it, two years in a row. Ain't gonna get it this year. I want those places eliminated because I walk there. And when traffic comes, I have to get up and get out of the road. And if I have to get out of the road, I've got ticks coming up my leg, okay? I, in the city of Benton, now, I know you don't spray the city anymore, I understand that, and I understand why. But we can eliminate water holes, the city can. The city can help me eliminate trash cans under the eaves where there's no, no gutter, okay? Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.